At least one of our clocks says it's 6:30, so I call to order the February meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board and ask Sanjay to give us an indication.
Thank you. Dear wise and loving ones, we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for giving us the ability to serve the community of Morrisville. Please grant us with clear insight and wisdom to impartially judge the merits and pitfalls of each matter placed in front of us. Grant us the wisdom to engage respectfully in meaningful discussion to further the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanjay. From the staff side, Michelle has already changed to the agenda tonight.
No, Chairman, there is not.
Okay. There is a minor perturbation to the agenda. Item nine, I feel it's probably my duty to recuse myself from that item. I don't think that's legally necessary, but I want to make sure there's no perception of any impropriety. So I will recuse myself from section nine and ask Lee, our very capable vice chairperson, to take over. And we will need one more voting member, that will be Josh. This month, it's Josh's term to be the voting member. Move forward to approval of minutes. Any changes or additions or corrections to the minutes from January meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes. Have a second?
Second.
Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. There's an opportunity for public comment, but if members of the public wish to speak about Holly Creek Road, I think that would be best under the public comment session under item nine. Anybody else wish to speak on any other topic tonight? So, hearing none, with the board's approval, I will recuse myself from the next item.
Thank you. Okay, I guess, Michelle, you can go ahead and...
Oh, no, do we need to do the hearing first? Or do we do the presentation first?
Planner two, Chris Lawson, does have a presentation prepared for you. It's a public comment session, not a public hearing, so no need to open that.
The first item is 2019-2550. This is a consideration of items to amend the land use plan and zoning map for 101 Holly Creek Road. Tonight, you'll be asked to make recommendation on the request to Town Council. And before I go any farther, I do just want to make it clear for everyone that the town has a land use plan update underway. But this request tonight is for the 2009 land use plan that's been adopted over 10 years ago. For the land use plan that the town is updating, you'll hear that again closer to summertime.
Is your microphone working? I don't know.
Is it? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, that's okay. Come on. Come on. This is not it. Ah. There.
How's that? You mean to restart or keep going?
I think you're fine. I just wanted to make sure the comments would be recorded so that they...
Okay, good. Let's move on then. All right, so the aerial image to the right shows the subject property. It's outlined in red. You can also see I've highlighted some of the developments around the property in yellow. And then underneath the development name in the parentheses is the town it's located in. This property is right at the border of Cary and Morrisville. So to get some background on the site, it's currently zoned Very Low Density Residential, which is a zoning district that's intended for about one dwelling acre per unit, or one dwelling unit per acre. The 2009 Future Land Use Plan also identifies the property as Very Low Density Residential. So the application for tonight seeks to change both the land use designation and the zoning district to Neighborhood Activity Center. So the applicant has offered conditions for the rezoning, and I'll cover those in a few slides. To give more background about the surrounding area, to the north is zoned Very Low Density Residential. There's a single-family home. To the east, across Davis Drive, there's one small parcel that's in Morrisville that's already zoned Neighborhood Activity Center. Most of it, you can see in the purple, is a planned development district in the town of Cary. And there are some apartments being constructed, as well as the Wegmans and the associated shopping center with that. To the south is, back in Morrisville, it's zoned Neighborhood Activity Center. It's currently vacant, but we do have Davis Drive apartments under review. And then to the west is zoned Very Low Density Residential, also has a single-family home. So a few more details about the property. It's about five and a half acres. It's within the town's corporate limits, and it was the site of a single-family home, which was recently demolished. Okay, so the applicant, this is a conditional rezoning. The applicant's offered a number of conditions, which I'll cover in the next few slides. The first group of conditions is a list of uses that would not be allowed with this rezoning. This list is on the left. I won't read them all, but some of the highlights include multifamily housing, banquet hall, or barge or lounges. So those would not be allowed. The applicant's also provided a sketch plan, which can be seen on the right. And this is the only time I show the sketch plan in the presentation. I can certainly go back to it if you need me to later in the presentation. Okay, so the next group of conditions deals with access. And I'm just going to read the condition as it shows on the slide and then kind of state some rationale behind it. So the first one is no vehicular ingress/egress to the property will be taken from Davis Drive. And really, the thought behind this is we want to funnel all traffic to the stoplight that's being installed at Holly Creek and Davis Drive. Just really feel that that's safer rather than getting traffic onto Davis. The next one is, prior to final construction drawing approval, the developer will pay a payment in lieu in the amount of 23.1360 cents, which amount reflects the 4% of added delay to the westbound right turn lane from Morrisville Carpenter Road on to northbound Davis Drive. So the graphic to the bottom right, you can see where that turn lane is. I've kind of tried to label it. Basically, you got Grace Park to the top and Morrisville Market to the south, and then CVS is across the street. So kind of results, the TIA came up with this number, and that would be paid at construction plan approval phase. Basically, they're paying into a pot of money the town already has to eventually build that right turn lane, you know, once we reach the final amount. So the fourth one is a cross-access easement shall be offered to the adjacent parcel to the west unless a waiver is granted by the planning director, subject to our typical waiver standards. So basically, I'm going to flip back to a site plan here, and if you can see my mouse, this is the parcel that the cross-access easement would be granted to. So the thought behind that is, right now, with just a single-family home and it being zoned Very Low Density Residential, a cross-access easement would not be required. But we do know we're going through the land use plan update. We know there's been some discussion on these sites. If it ever does happen to get developed for something different, we want that flexibility to allow that cross-access if it's determined necessary at the time. Again, that would not be required with this site plan at the time, so the developer offered that up to us. So here are the last three conditions, and also a recent aerial image of the site. The aerial image is actually from late January of this year. So the first one is, the office development shall not exceed a maximum of 62,000 square feet. The sixth one is, there shall be a 20-foot landscape buffer along the portion of the property that fronts Holly Creek Road. So the landscape buffer shall feature three shade trees per 100 linear feet and a solid evergreen hedge at least three feet tall and two feet wide of planting. So some background on this is, it's based on one of our landscape buffers already. Staff had asked applicant to provide more landscaping is required. They agreed to that. Then a neighbor to this property asked them to provide a wider landscape buffer than what we'd asked for. They agreed to that also. So that's kind of why it's not your typical landscape buffer you might see in other site plans. That's why it's spelled out specifically. And then the last one is that the sketch plan will be in substantial confor... or the site plan will be in substantial conformance to the sketch plan they've submitted. And just a caveat of that, of course, the sketch plan is going to have to meet UDO standards. So some potential impacts to transportation. Basically, the top is, if you left it zoned, exactly what it is today, Very Low Density Residential, these are projected transportation impacts at maximum development density. The bottom shows projected impacts if the rezoning were to occur. If you notice, they're all 62,000 square feet, which is what was offered up as the maximum development size. So these are the maximum projected impacts. And we just, we listed medical office because that was what's been said is the intended use. We got office, and then we have a shopping center, just to give you some ideas of how the traffic may differ. So, and I can come back to that if you want to read more. So staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of the requested land use plan and zoning map amendments from Very Low Density Residential to Conditional Neighborhood Activity Center. So I got four reasons, and I'll just read those also. So the amendments are required by changed conditions. So this area of Morrisville and Cary has changed significantly since the adoption of the 2009 Future Land Use Plan, and the requests are compatible with the trend of development in this area. The properties directly north and south of the site are zoned Neighborhood Activity Center. Therefore, the requested rezoning is compatible with the zoning in the surrounding area. The requested land use map amendment and zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the developments in the surrounding area on Davis Drive, thereby resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. And finally, the property is located along a major thoroughfare, which is typically considered a suitable location for the types of uses permitted in the NAC zoning district. So when you are considering the land use plan amendment and conditional rezonings tonight, just know that they are legislative requests. They are at your discretion. You will be recommending approval or denial to the Town Council. Our, the town's administrative manual has these standards, which you can consider. Just figure you might want to take a look at those. I can come back. And the last slide here is, here are tonight's actions items. I provided you a script, which you can read off if you want to make a motion, so you choose. And then just to finish up, I'd be happy to take any other questions. The applicant team is also here, and I know they have a short presentation prepared. And then I also want to note that we have the town's stormwater engineering manager here at my request, but I know he has a prior commitment. He'll have to leave by about 7:15, so if you have any stormwater specific questions, Ben is sitting over there, maybe best to ask him early. Like I said, be happy to take any questions. I know team has a presentation for you also. Up to you, Mr. ...
Thank you.
Do we want to go ahead and open for public comment before we hear from the team, or what would be the...
I would suggest a hearing from the applicant's team so that we have all the information out there, and then public comment after that would be the typical order.
If you guys are ready.
Okay. Good evening. Matthew Carpenter of Maddox Law Firm here on behalf of the property owner, Jay Johnson, and the proposed developer. With me tonight are Jay Johnson, sitting in the front row here, and Brandon Moore, our landscape architect on the project. I just want to introduce the case to you and explain, the property is on the corner of Holly Creek Road and Davis Drive, and it's actually a pretty big lot. It's five and a half acres, and you can see it there, and you can see the residential behind it, and there's other mixed-use surrounding. As staff explained, we're requesting a rezoning to NAC with conditions. And so here's a graphic showing you the zoning along Davis Drive. As you can see, there's a pretty big strip of NAC already, the shopping center to the south and across Davis Drive. And also, the area in the purple is Cary zoning jurisdiction. And as you probably know, that's the Wegmans that's under construction right now. We have a few different conditions that Chris went through. I just want to call out a couple of the uses like he did. We've excluded apartments in subsection A and a couple of other more intense uses like kennels and vets and bars. So we think that we've really limited our uses here in the context of the residential neighborhood behind the property. You can see our sketch plan here. We're showing a two-story medical office building that's 62,000 square feet. You can see the parking surrounding the building. After talking with staff, we've tried to push the building as close as we can to Davis Drive and Holly Creek because that's the preferred design now, is to kind of insulate the parking lot behind the building. And note also, like Chris said, that we're showing cross-access to the, what's actually Mark Clefcorn's property to the west of the property. And we're also showing cross-access to the apartment development that's underway to the south. And so we think that that's going to provide a good mix of, you know, walkable area where pedestrians can move from the mixed-use development to the south to the medical office building and back. And so we think that's the goal of the NAC zoning, and we think we're accomplishing that. I'd like to have the property owner come up and speak a little bit about his experience developing these type of buildings and explain to you kind of what the project's going to look like. So Jay, do you want...
Thank you for your time tonight. Again, I'm Jay Johnson. I live at 1436 Ridge Road in Raleigh. And we have guys like Matthew come speak because this is not our strong suit, but at least I'd like to tell you a little bit, I've been in the, I was an architect and then became a builder developer, and I've been a developer for 30 years, specializing in medical office buildings, although we have done projects that were non-medical, that are office and retail and restaurant, lots of uses. But the last 10 years or so, we've been focused on medical and felt that there was a need for medical in this sub-market so that people can go to their practitioners near their homes, quite a distance to get to some of the existing facilities, and I know they're a lot more planned. But it's a great site, and it looked to be a site that needed to be zoned, more of a commercial zoning. So we thought we had a good opportunity there to kind of do something that was not, you know, hopefully swimming against the current, but rather doing something that would be more aligned with what I think the town's long-term plans would be. Having said that, we've just worked really hard to be cognizant of what, you know, is going on around us with our neighbors and their opinions and desires. And I think many of them also understand that that area is changing, as a lot of our county has. So our goal for this site is to be medical office. We need to test the market and find out if we can lease up a medical office building. We think we can. Our fallback would be to do regular office, which is less intensive, but both are less intensive than a retail shopping center, so that's good. And it's not multifamily, which I know you have a lot of that here. So, you know, having said all that, I'm open to any questions you may have. We are not merchant developers. We keep properties that we develop, many of them we've had for 15, 16, 20, 20 years. So we're not, our goal is not to go build something and flip it and sell it and leave. I've been in this area a long time.
Explain the building to your other project owner.
Building, oh yeah, this building that you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So this building here is just under 90,000 square feet. It's a four-story that we're currently building. This building is now 97% leased. It's across from the Wake Med Hospital in Cary on Kildare Farm Road. And our second building is underway right now. It's about the same size, but it's taller. It's a five-story. Both of these buildings have multi-level parking decks. Much bigger project, more suitable for that, for that market. It's a Class A office building. As I said, we're 97% full on this one, and we're 80% full on the one we're building now, and we haven't gotten it, just now getting it dried in. I think you may have other pictures of it.
Can you hit the arrow?
See, this one? Sorry.
Oh, okay.
There you go. Okay, there's some other pictures. Just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea. This one's fairly contemporary, being over in the setting that it's in. So I mean, we are trying to do something nice out there, so I think you'd be very proud to see that, you know, A building. Whether it would look like this or not, I don't know. We haven't really gotten that far. We just want to make sure that we were in lockstep with the town on the zoning and that we can make everybody happy and before we went too far down the road with it. But generally, you know, I have multiple other buildings, but I think this is just a current one I thought you might like to see tonight when Matthew asked me. So thank you again for your time tonight. I appreciate your consideration of this rezoning and plan amendment, tax amendment change. And so, again, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that the building on this slide is much bigger than the building we're proposing here. This one's like 90,000 square feet and four stories, whereas ours will be two stories and 62,000 square feet. We mainly included it to show an example of the building materials and what it will look like, because a lot of times if you just see the sketch plan, it doesn't really give you much information about, you know, what you're going to be driving by and seeing. And two, this is, you know, some of the interiors in Jay's other project, so again, to get an idea of the character of his developments and the quality. So, in sum, the rezoning and proposed development provides a number of public benefits, namely, the rezoning will create consistent and orderly development and mixed-use development along Davis Drive. Going back to the zoning slide where you could see the red all the way down Davis Drive, it'll be consistent. And then the office building will act as kind of a transition area between the commercial development across the street and then the residential behind. And so we think that will be a good benefit. Also, the development will help create a walkable mixed-use area with the apartments to the south. So which, that's really what's envisioned by the NAC zoning, is a mix of uses in a confined area where residents can walk and live, shop, and work, you know, they were to work at one of these buildings. The medical office building will bring jobs to Morrisville and offer medical care in a convenient location, which I think Jay touched on. It'll be right there, kind of on the edge of Morrisville and Cary where there are a lot of residents. And so I think it'll serve the community well. Lastly, the development will contribute to road improvements through a payment in lieu, which Chris explained, and we've also included in our conditions to just lock that in, that we'll pay it at site plan. So thank you for your time and support, and we're available for any questions. I've also got Brandon here if you have questions about the site, specifically the sketch plan. So, thank you.
Okay, so is there anyone here that has any comments on this project? If you would just please, for the record, state your name and address.
My name's Tom Gale, and I live at 112 Holly Creek Road.
That's what you wanted?
Yes, please. So I'm not, excuse me, I'm not here to promote the site or to refute it. What I wanted to do is give you a little bit of history of the area and then a suggestion for what to be done with Holly Creek Road. So when my family moved here in 1982, the, it was quite different. Holly Creek Road was called Old Sears Farm Road. There was no structures on there. Ours, I think, was the first house. And the Davis Drive was called Stone Road. It was a dirt road. And the Stone Road ended at what is now McCrimmon Parkway. So it was very isolated, very, really a very idyllic spot, and we raised our family there. However, over the years, they did change things. The Davis Drive, well, the name was changed, and they paved it, which was really nice because when the rain came, you would ride your car down and often get stuck in the mud. So we were for the, for the changes. And they also had a grocery store, and so we didn't have 10 miles to go to Cary to get groceries. However, things are changing, and our neighbors who are here are concerned about the quality of the life changing. And we feel that this is going to happen regardless. I mean, right now, for example, our property, do we have a, our property is right here, and behind us, we have a storage facility, and right over here is, from what we understand, going to be a gas station. And if you look at the whole area, and this ties in well with the previous speaker, that this is all commercial. This is the Wegman over here. And if you go down the south of Holly Creek, you'll have the Food Line. And across from Food Line is Grace Park. So that whole corridor is becoming commercial. So our concern now is, we know it's just a matter of time before it all changes. So we're not fighting that we realize is going to happen. What we're afraid is that once you start approving zoning changes on the street, for example, in 101, then it will, with time, there will be movement for rezoning one lot at a time going down Holly Creek. And that's, that is a concern because then you end up with a development which is very piecemeal. In fact, if you go up 55 towards 54 and you look at what's on 55, that development there is really not very attractive. So what we are concerned is, all right, can I, I'm representing the neighborhood. I'll be very short. So anyway, we're concerned that if that were to happen, it would be a very unattractive development. So what we're saying is, we would like to see this area change to some commercial zoning, whether it be Neighborhood Activity Center or some other thing which I don't know about. Because then the town, remember, I've been a member of the town since 1982. I really am interested in the town. Let's increase our, maximize our property tax. And that can be done with a very well-developed plan encompassing this about 50 acres. So that's, that is our concern. I talked to the mayor. The mayor is concerned about overloading the schools, and so they are, he is recommending no more fixed, or no more mixed housing facility. And so what we're suggesting as a neighborhood is that everyone on the board consider making recommendations to change this all to some sort of commercial and preclude the development in a piecemeal fashion. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And I guess we can, oh.
Greg Patterson, 106 Holly Creek Road. Of course, you know me because I've spoken before you before, spoken in front of the council before. Honestly, I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I did want to bring a few things to your attention. Agree 100% with what Tom said. You know, that's our position, that entire neighborhood should be considered comprehensively. The reasoning that Mr. Lawson gave for wanting it to be NAC, the areas, that same reasoning, I think, should be used for the entire neighborhood. We don't get that same support on the board, I mean, from planning when we bring that up, but we do want to make that clear, that if you look at that map, the entire thing is consumed by the pinks and the purples. With considering this... Considering this particular property, though, one thing I do want to bring out that I don't know that was, has been recognized properly is the cross-access to the multifamily apartments that is being considered on the side. There's no way out to make a left on Davis Drive from that apartment complex unless you drive all the way through Food Line parking lot, or unless you go through where this cross hatch is going to be. So, the traffic that you've proposed for this building may be adequate for the building, may be consistent with that, but I think that you really need to consider the fact that there is a lot of traffic that's going to be coming through that parking lot to make a left when they're going to work in the morning and then coming back in. You can't make a left into the apartments if you're coming in from the other way. So, I think it's something that should be considered when you're doing the layouts, if, whether you want to have that access open immediately or not. You may not want to. But as I said, my main reason for speaking is I want the board, I want town council to be consistent. That's the one thing that the neighborhood has asked for. If we're going to approve this going forward, we should be consistent in how we handle the rest of the properties. Otherwise, the comments that we've made in the past about the piecemeal, I don't know if people may not believe that's true, but that really is what we're going to end up with there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Syed Jeffrey. I am a commercial real estate broker. We also have interest in the two properties over here.
Can you state your address as well for the record?
My address is 310 Long Mill Gate, which is not this address over here, but we're, our interest, we own properties 110 and 115 Holly Creek. And the reason we weren't planning on saying anything, but we just wanted to come and support our neighbors in what is happening over here. We are definitely pro for a better zoning, which would be more commercial and go along with everything that's happening over here, because then, as Greg had pointed out, with the different traffic and the different traffic patterns that are going to change and everything that's going to happen in this area, it's, it's just going to become a kind of a bottleneck. And if this area was left as residential, we would not much, you know, benefit over here, given the fact that, who would want to necessarily live when you have big parking lots all around here? And of course, all this is also commercial. And I think previously, it was proposed for high-end homes over here, which, if I was to buy a house, I would never want to have a house which backs up to a sheets or something, especially if it was a high-end home. We would highly recommend something which is, you know, like an NAC zoning or any zoning which would allow predominantly commercial. We may or may not be in favor of multifamily as such, but any sort of commercial thing, medical. And, I mean, there's, there's a lack of medical in this area, from my understanding, given all the population that's growing. So, for 110 and 115, we'd definitely stand with our neighbors, and we'd like to see something more positive from the commercial aspect of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else still would like to speak on this? You guys have anything to add from the applicant's side?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Gosh, I appreciate it. So, I think our planning goals are similar to the neighbors'. First, we only own the property at the street, at Davis Drive, and so, we can't speak to the zoning of the properties behind us. But it should be noted that the town, like Chris said, is currently in the process of amending the land use map, which could potentially designate some of the properties along Holly Creek, the properties the neighbors are speaking about, as Neighborhood Activity Center or some other commercial-type zoning district, which it sounds like that's what they're aiming for. I also think if that were the case and the neighbors were to come together and bring a rezoning case, the town would support it if it were consistent with the map. That's obviously an assumption, but, you know, if it were designated for that in the future planning stages, then I think it would be agreeable. And also, the cross-access concern, I think, we've had a TIA done on our site, and the payment in lieu reflects the impacts to Davis Drive that our project is going to have. And so, we're also, there will be, I think there will continue to be road improvements that are done as the Davis Drive corridor kind of develops. So, that's all I've got, unless anyone has any questions.
I mean, I guess, all right, so, does anyone, Christine, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
I've got a few questions, please.
Okay.
You said that you had a meeting with the neighbors, and unfortunately, not very many showed up. But were they receptive to the idea of a medical building there?
They were. There were five neighbors at the meeting, and three of the neighbors came and were, they were obviously concerned about the changes, but they ultimately left the meeting okay with the development. There was one neighbor, Mr. Chang, who had some further questions, and we were in further communication with him, and he's the neighbor that asked about the buffer on Holly Creek, which we expanded to help with, you know, noise or light that he might get from the office building.
And I know it was mentioned, I don't know if I heard it correctly, did you undertake any sort of study to see if a medical building would be supported there?
I know that Jay has done some studies. You want to speak about those?
We did an informal study, yes. We did, we did a pretty extensive informal study, you know, in-house, to just find out all the practitioners that are in the areas and kind of flag out where they are and what they do, where the nearest hospitals are, looked at the population count, and I think the area is definitely underserved. And I think other developments are planned that I can't really speak to at the moment. I don't know who's, where the confidentiality's are, but it's definitely an underserved market for medical, from our, from our study. I will mention one other quick thing, too. The point we heard tonight about the cross-access, I think, has some merit, and we are not demanding or promoting that we have that cross-access. From the multifamily site, we are amiable to have it or not to have it. So, I just wanted to throw that out for the town's consideration and also for the neighbors to know that that is something that typically is asked for or that you would expect, but in this particular case, from our perspective, we would be good either way on that.
If I heard you correctly, I think you said you took an informal survey of practitioners in the area.
What we did was, we located all of the practitioners. We didn't go speak to them door-to-door or anything like that. We just did, we found out who occupies and where and flagged all the places where medical practitioners in this area and that immediate sub-market, if I'd say about a mile radius or two miles possibly, and listed them all. And then, we also found all the local, you know, surgery centers, hospitals, things like that, to find out, you know, will there be a demand for, you know, medical practitioners in this area? I think there's going to be a pretty high demand, and that's what attracted us to this market, because that's our, that's our forte is the medical.
Did you poll or survey any of the residents in the area?
I don't know if, oh, the residents?
Yeah, homeowners?
Certainly talked to several. My first contact was with Mark Kleffcorn. I don't know if Mark is here tonight, who's the adjacent neighbor behind. And we did talk to Brian Chang and his wife. A few people came, but we had a neighborhood meeting, which was not required, but we wanted to have that, because we do want to be, you know, fit in with our neighbors, and we know it's a change for them, too. I lived in a subdivision on about five acres for about 17 years and saw change come, so I definitely can relate to what they're seeing. So, our commitment is just to be as cooperative with the neighbors as they go through this transition to lessen the impact.
A few minutes ago, we saw the traffic impact analysis.
Yeah.
Was that available when you met with the neighbors?
I believe it was, yeah. Yeah, we had that. We sure did. We didn't discuss it a whole lot, but...
It was submitted to the town.
Yeah, it was already submitted then, okay.
And are we talking like a Monday-through-Friday facility or weekends, or do you not know yet?
Typically, what we see is roughly a seven-to-seven weekdays, and on Saturdays, usually by midday or one. Not too many practitioners are open on Saturdays. If we have an urgent care, those guys are about the only exception. They like to be open on Saturdays and Sundays. For the most part, if we don't have an urgent care, I think most practitioners will be those five days, and then several will be half a day of Saturday.
The conditions that we saw that were vague, conditions imposed by the neighbors?
No. The vast majority were conditions we put on it voluntarily. We may have, I think we added a couple others based on maybe Mark's and Brian's comments. I think we did add two or three more conditions.
There were a couple uses that we excluded at the request of Mark Kleffcorn, which was the neighbor directly to the west. I think it was maybe the kennel, and there was one other one.
Yeah, none of them were anything that we had any remote desire to develop.
Looking at the sketch plan, if I'm looking at it correctly, there's going to be one access point, and that's going to be on Holly Creek Road?
That's right. It's on Holly Creek Road, unless we have the cross-access.
Brandon, you know...
Hey, I'm Brandon Moore with the Syed Group, 111 Oberlin Road. If you have questions about the sketch plan, I can help with that. We do have one access on Holly Creek Road. We spoke with the town way early on this, and they didn't want us to have access on Davis Drive, so we're limited to Holly Creek, and staff requested the cross-access, so we added that to the south.
How wide is that drive going to be there?
To Holly Creek?
Yeah.
Normally, it would be at least 25-foot back-to-back.
And I assume that those are dumpsters in the back behind the, by the potential open space?
Yeah, we have the dumpsters kind of at the back of the site.
So, this is sort of a, this is a sketch plan, so we can't, we're not guaranteed anything in this plan. So, if you want to get into those details, we can, but it may not be the best use of everyone here, because the dumpsters could easily be somewhere else, and that's not governed by what we're going to talk about here. We're just talking about zoning and what items are be allowed in that zone.
Okay. I've got nothing more.
Thank you.
Acting Chairman Langston, if I could just interject for a moment, because we do have our stormwater administrator here, who does have a prior commitment, so I just wanted to check and make sure that there weren't questions for him. I don't know if there are or aren't, but he will need to be leaving soon.
My only question perhaps to him or somebody else would be around, if I remember correctly, there is a pond on this property, right? So, is the plan to fill up the pond? Because if this parking lot needs to come over, probably the pond is going to be filled in, right?
Speak to that.
Right, there is a large pond on there. We, before we purchased the property, we had a lot of investigations done on the pond. Morseville's, I'm not sure if I called the name right, I believe it's Water Quality Department, is that the right one, has looked at this site. North Carolina Division of Water Quality also has looked at this site, and also, we received a permit from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for this site, that there's no wetlands, and that it's fine to fill the site in. Did a lot of studies, or fill the pond in, did a lot of studies on sediment and had the depth of the pond and all that, all that. So, effectively, what would happen is we would drain the pond, let it dry out, and then scoop out the sediment, the alluvial soils, get those out, and then just bring in fill material, some from the front of the site, but most from off-site in to fill the pond. So, yes, pond would be gone.
Now, I can just confirm, that's, everything's, there's no riparian buffers, and the pond's not jurisdictional, so they can, they can do whatever.
So, I actually have a question. The current, on the property right now, the current pond is not a retention pond?
It's not acting as a official retention pond.
With the, so when they put, that'll be a lot of impervious surface that will be placed on this property, is, is the stormwater typically drain south for this property?
Yes, it's just going to drain to the lowest point, and...
The topo follows towards the pond from the top of the site.
Just to address that, yeah, the topography falls away from Davis Drive, and on our sketch, we'd anticipated putting the pond or some sort of stormwater management device in the southwest corner. It was indicated on the sketch plan. Again, it's a concept. It could be a sand filter or bioretentionary or something, but we know it's going to be in that general vicinity.
Anybody else have any stormwater-related comments?
What kind of timeline are we looking at to build this facility?
Do you have any, you have no more stormwater? No more stormwater, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'm done with.
Thank you.
That was my only question, so thanks.
I think from the time we received building permits, it's probably a nine- or 10-month process to get the shell building finished and the site finished, and then there's a lease-up period. Usually, we don't start till we're about 50% leased, and that's when you usually get your financing, anyway.
So, did you say that perhaps your development plan for any kind of activity on the site may happen in another, maybe start in another six months?
I think that's, that would be the earliest. That's right. I think, I would love to see it start this year, and we have to go through the site plan approval process, which, as you know, is pretty detailed, so that's going to take up several months.
So, just a question on the traffic impact analysis. It listed three different uses. The primary use was the medical facility. Secondary, you said, was office, and then there was a third that was retail. It seems like that the impact of the traffic analysis would be much higher in a retail setting. If the primary is for a medical, would you discount or exclude retail? Would you be open to doing that?
My philosophy has always been not to exclude things that I don't know that I need to exclude. The truth is, we're not the least bit interested in developing retail. So, the only, the only reason we wouldn't want to have additional restrictions put on us is if something doesn't work out, if it turns out we don't get approved for our site plan, or that we're unable to lease it, we decide to sell the property. We want to be careful about all the restrictions that we put on others who may come after us. So, right now, the TIA is based on, I believe, ours was based on medical office, which is more intense than office. So, I assume if we had, if we went retail, we'd be doing another traffic improvement analysis or, you know.
And just to reiterate on that, condition number seven there, development of the property shall be in substantial performance with the sketch plan. I think that that sketch plan doesn't match up with retail very well, so I assume that staff would at least have some sort of process to come in with a different, a different layout if somebody wanted to develop this other than an office.
Appreciate that. And then, the other question, just a general one, is around property values. So, you guys have done this before, and one of the conditions that we look at is impact to property values of owners in their surrounding area. You know, can you, can you comment on that as how that media effect?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, as a, as a general rule, property values will increase. In particular, if they are able to rezone the other parcels like ours, and they could become a non-conforming use for some period, the future development on those lots would fit the new long-term plan. But it will, and I think we'll see that almost immediately when our buildings go up. Typically, properties around them get looked at really hard, and there are already other people in there looking at lots now, and I think that this has a little bit to do with that, but it should help their values, in particular, if they're rezoned.
Yeah, I think the residential price per acre in the, generally, and the mixed-use price per acre are very different. And so, if you, if the future land use map...
And so if you, if the future land use map changes that property to allow for mixed use, then the offers would go up theoretically because you can have more density there and so the, a developer can pay more for the property.
I do have one question also related to traffic impact analysis is, as one of the residents, Holly Creek mentioned, the, there's no left turn light there. It can be, I drove down there recently, it's pretty difficult to make a left turn. And with this potential commercial medical building going there, there'll be a lot of people that want to eat lunch, obviously, around. Is there going to be some walkability? Is the town working in tandem to make that a more walkable area since there will be a Wegmans and mixed retail right across the street?
Yeah, there's going to be, we're directly aligned with the shopping center across the street. They will be doing the initial improvements to that intersection and we anticipate improving our access, maybe through adding a signal head, so that you will be able to make a left out there. And along with these improvements, there will be, there will likely be some crosswalk improvements at that light, maybe pedestrian signals, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that it would be definitely important to get more, to have a better walkability feature since otherwise people be getting in their car, driving across the street, you know, for a matter of 200 yards.
Right. Yeah, I mean, one of my comments I had written down was specifically regarding pedestrian. I mean, I would feel much better about it in general if there was a condition, you know, because it's all well and good, but we've, we've been burned before by people who've come in and say, oh yeah, we'll do the X, Y, and Z, and then they do W. So I guess, you know, I don't know if they would be amenable, but certainly if there was some planned pedestrian improvements, that would go along. You've got, you know, over 55 development literally across the street and sort of stands the reason those people are going to want to access a medical office potentially. You know, I can see there being issues with that.
Right, so just to clarify, you would like to see pedestrian improvements across Davis Drive to get to that shopping center across the street?
I mean, just because it feels like there's big circulation and I understand it would, you know, as time goes on, it will be added on, but right on day one, there could be potential for conflict there.
And from staff, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say that it, one is across to Wegmans, that's a walking path, and then parallely to where the full line area is as well, because you want both accessibility available.
Sure, and from staff, I just wanted to add, I didn't put this in my PowerPoint, but along Davis Drive, there will be a third southbound lane added. There will also be a 10-foot multi-use path, which is a big sidewalk along Davis Drive, and then along Holly Creek Drive, a five-foot sidewalk will also be required during site plan phase. So, so those will happen, doesn't address your other concerns, but those at least will happen, just want to let you know.
And then I want to add onto that too, excuse me, with the adjacent parcel to the south being the recent approval being developed, you'll have a continuous multi-use path from Holly Creek all the way to Morrisville Carpenter.
And people would eventually walk through the parking lot as well, because they'll be connected running. My other question was, you talked about the parcel, the cross access to the parcel to the west, where exactly would that be on here? Because I mean, I'm just looking at layout, it's not super.
Right, well, we purposely, we left it off for now because the condition is that we have to offer it, and so the other property owner would have to agree to accept the cross access and we left it blank so that we can determine the.
So you'll move that as you actually develop?
Right, so the location would probably be decided during site plan, when we'd know more about, about the site and, and probably the adjacent use down the road.
Does anybody have anything else?
Big question perhaps for Michelle. What is the timeline for us to finish, remind me again for the land use plan?
The land use plan is currently kind of going into its final phase, so we're going back out for one last round of public comment and then that final draft will be presented to yourselves and the town council, so we're probably looking around fall of this year.
So I guess we're circling back to the pedestrian, so I mean, is there any sort of thing planned? I mean, do we, I can't remember, I don't think they have any pedestrian access on that. I mean, the signals are up, I don't remember there being like crosswalks or anything.
Right, well, so just to clarify, as the property owner, we don't, we can't control the, the crosswalks across Davis Drive. I think that would be something that the, the DOT or the town would, would undertake with the DOT.
I mean, you're going to add a lane to the road.
Right, right.
So I mean, you're, you're working in the road, I mean, it's clear that you can, it is capable for you guys to do a project where you would work in the road.
Yeah, DOT permits will be required as, as part of this and a lot of it depends on what the Wegmans plan requires and what they have in place by the time we get through site plan. It may be that we just have to line up our crosswalks with, or line up our ADA ramps with their crosswalks. We have talked about this internally and it is desirable for us to be able to walk across the street, for our tenants to be able to go over there for lunch and for people in the communities over there to come to see our doctors and specialists.
Do you guys have any other comments? Anybody from the board?
No, it's perhaps again to Michelle, a question about, even though we are looking at this particular plan, right? Is, do we need any kind of, if we have to look at the entire area in general, right? The entirety acre in general, is that something we can look at without having a particular, you know, request or a request from the residents to look at entirety as opposed to parcel by parcel?
So those are really two separate issues. So you have a rezoning request in front of you for 101 Holly Creek Road, and then we have kind of running in tandem the land use plan, and we know that there's some discussion about the future of the Holly Creek neighborhood as part of the land use plan. What's before you tonight is the 101 Holly Creek rezoning. From staff's perspective at least, regardless of what were to happen with the rest of the neighborhood, we would still be recommending approval of the rezoning of this site because it's located on Davis Drive, it's a major thoroughfare, that frontage and all the other commercials surrounding it up and down Davis Drive, we believe that it's consistent with that. So regardless of what ultimately happens with the rest of the neighborhood, and I think we should let that land use plan process play out and make that determination as part of that process, we would still be recommending approval of this application.
The reason for asking that particular question is if our land use plan is going to, you know, timeout, let's say in fall, and between now and fall, some other application comes in front of us with a different request, right? Now, we kind of get to a point where you are, you know, you could potentially piecemeal different things, right? And I'm trying to think, given the timing, is it reasonable for us to think about that entire 50 acre parcel together now, right? And, and fold whatever discussions and decisions we come up with into the land use plan that turns out in, in fall? Yeah, otherwise you have a six-month gap, or you have to say, or can we say there is a six-month monitorium on anything that is being done between, on that plan?
If something were to come in for another property on Holly Creek, kind of in this interim period, you have the ability to recommend denial of that application. If you have concerns about it being piecemealed, if you have concerns about it not being compatible with other residential along that street, yourselves, town council, there's no obligation to approve that application. You can recommend denial if you had concerns. This property we see as different, it's not isolated back in the middle of the neighborhood, it's located directly on Davis Drive with frontage on that road.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? I think you guys are, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess, is there any more discussion? I mean, does anyone want to make a motion or any changes to what you might want to see?
I'm trying to pull in the plug. I personally think, you know, we should figure out what, what we want as a town for that entire parcel. If we start doing this, you, if the gentleman who was talking about his parcels across, they may come up with their own activities under it. So now, we as a town are perhaps going to lose out on a big parcel of land that we could actually shape to be different for the town as opposed to individually something.
Go ahead, Chris.
I, I think those are all good ideas and I think we can look at land use and we started land use, but they put together an excellent package with clear decision criteria. We agree to it, we don't agree to it, there's items. And I think if we follow the plan of what's been put together today, we're focusing on that one section and all the rest of the city, we're still working on that and the rest of Holly Creek Road, we're working on it. It shouldn't really impact this particular lot that they have already looked at detail and provided everything from traffic to designs to a full team that's been here, they've met with the community. So if there's a reason that you don't want to approve that, maybe that's how you vote. But I don't think extra information about the other properties should impact this decision one way or the other. I think we have enough information to make a decision.
And I do think there is a merit to what Michelle was saying. I mean, this is, you could sort of, you know, this is a separate enough parcel that it, you know, it isn't necessarily going to drive everything back there behind it. I mean, I think you're right, even if this was, you know, since it fronts on Davis Drive, there's a lot of, it, it just makes it different than I think the other parcels. So, I mean, does anyone have any, are we good with the conditions that are on there? Does anybody want to read the book that we have before us, make a motion? I mean, is, I, you know, I mean, does anyone have any consensus about anything else?
I mean.
Point over there, Christine's point about the criteria, just to review that really quickly. All right, I think it's in the presentation, the list of criteria.
Can you bring that up?
Yeah.
This one right here?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so your land use stuff is on the line.
Yeah, I mean, does anyone, I mean, I guess, does anyone disagree with, with any of these conditions? I mean, I do think there's, we've, I mean, just in the last 18 months, vastly changed conditions to this property and all the surrounding properties. I mean, it, you know, there's probably a need for additional office or medical office in the area. I mean, you know, again, we've already talked about potentially changes in this area, it would help with logical redevelopment, it would promote economic development and well-being and significantly enhance the natural environment. I mean, it's, I guess you can always make a debate on that, but certainly it looks like it could be an attractive project. I mean, as far as being consistent with the comprehensive plan, I mean, that is somewhat of a tough one, but I think we are obviously realizing that there's a change there and I think there is some support for change in that area, so I think it would be consistent with what will be the comprehensive plan. Certainly they're going by the UVO, they're again, back to the changed conditions and some of these are sort of overlapping. So I guess, does anyone have any comments? You see anything?
No.
So do I have a motion?
Could you go back to the, the ones that they are eliminating? Usage, sorry.
Go back to these conditions, right here? Sure. And I'd also like to add, if you have any specific questions about the site plan, UVO requirements, feel free to ask me.
I'm not exactly sure of the difference between manufacturing custom and other forms of manufacturing, but that's more than just a general interest.
That's the only manufacturing that's allowed in an AC district.
Okay, that's one, okay. You're right. I forgot when I was looking at the table.
Michelle, I have a question. If we approve what they're asking for tonight, the zoning and amendment changes, is that also approval of the development plan that they're sharing with us?
Not necessarily. I mean, one of the conditions in here, and something that we had talked to the applicant about, is somewhat standard, that when they come in with their site plan, that what they submit needs to be substantially similar to the sketch plan they submitted. So they're not tied to the use, any other use that's permitted in the zoning district would still be allowed, but we'd just be looking for building generally in the location that they're showing, parking oriented generally as shown, access points generally in the same area. So consider that, you know, it's a sketch plan, it's a concept plan. It will change some when they go into full design, but overall, the major parts in terms of the look, the feel, the layout are expected to be substantially similar to this.
And that extends to the square footage, two-story is not a four-story later, those parameters are the same, yeah?
Yes, they did offer up a condition related to the square footage, however, at the 62,000 square feet.
So, who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion, all right?
Sure, but you've got to read all this. So we have to do two, we have the, the land use amendment and the consistency statement. So you can go ahead and, basically we have to read, because of state law, we have to read more or less what they have written there.
Make a motion for the resolution 202-50-0?
Yes, it's the top part, so you would just, yeah.
Make a resolution for 2019-255.
You, actually, we need to, I think we need to read it out pretty much exactly as written there, more, more or less.
I hereby recommend that the Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval to the Town Council of Resolution 2019-255-0A pertaining to the Amendment of the Land Use Plan for 101 Holly Creek Road located at the southwest corner of Holly Creek Road and Davis Drive to the Neighborhood Activities Center.
That was LUP 1901, correct?
Yeah, LUP 1901.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed?
Aye.
We have one aye. You get recorded, Barney? You get, you get the, okay. Okay, would you like to continue the second part or would someone else be brave to step in?
I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2019-255-0B to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for a zoning map amendment for 101 Holly Creek Road located at the southwest corner of Holly Creek Road and Davis Drive to the Conditional Neighborhood Activities Center, zoning district REZ 19-01, based on the following.
Thank you. Yes.
The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is of public interest because the proposed amendment supports the following policies in the town's adopted land use plan. A, Policy 1A, promote growth and development that contributes to and builds upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable, and unique community in the Triangle Region. B, Policy 2A, promote development that fosters a sense of place by improving the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, streetscapes, amenities, and public spaces.
Continue.
I hear, approving the zoning map amendment, I hereby move to recommend approval of ordinance 219-255-0 to the Morrisville Town Council approving a zoning map amendment for 101 Holly Creek Road located at the southwest corner of Holly Creek Road and Davis Drive to the Conditional Neighborhood Activities Center, zoning district REZ 19-01.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you very much.
I think we have three action items.
Oh, there's three?
Yeah.
Did we read two by mistake at the same time or?
Okay.
Okay, is that okay or?
No, that's, that's all, yeah. No, you guys got them.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess we can take a very short break, and we can go find Peter and move on to the next item. So let's, five minutes or less.
So I think we're ready to start with...
Alrighty, so, good evening, board members. Chairman Pritchard, welcome back. So I'm Dylan Brookhouse, Transportation Planner. I'll be doing a Resolution 2020-57-0, which is Unified Development Ordinance text amendments. Specifically, we'll be looking at Section 5.8, which is in the Development Standards Articles, which is, looks at access and circulation, in particular, 5.86 E2C, which is driveway spacing standards. This is, the proposed UVO amendment that staff is presenting involves two standards. Currently, is the removal of Standard 2 in the UVO, which bases driveway intersections on the ITE Trip Generation Manual. So if there were over, more than 300 average daily trips, driveways would need to be measured 400 feet from each other and 250 feet from a street intersection. Staff is also recommending an additional standard that allow minor and major thoroughfares, just, in just those two, just those categories. And if you want to refer to your attachment, Attachment 1, to see what roads that would trigger, to have driveways, distances from driveway intersections be 250. This will complement the existing standard of 250 feet from street intersections. Staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment. I did a research, researched all the other, the Wake County municipalities to look into what their standards are regarding the ITE and kind of major and minor thoroughfares. No other municipality uses the Trip Generation Manual in a basis for their decisions. Kind of feel that it, the ITE can be somewhat arbitrary. There were previous developments and proposed developments. I should say that if you look at the ninth and 10th generation of the manual, you would have hit the 300, which would have caused 400 feet. But if you go to the 10th edition, it's slightly under 200. So this kind of subjective and arbitrary, whereas this sets a standard regardless of using another source material, just one standard. If you're going to go through the code, you know what it is. Also, the same thing with the driveway spacing standards of driveway to driveway along thoroughfares. I did another research, the range typically ended up being about 200 to 400. This looks, 250 is, again, complementary to what the current driveway to street intersections are, and really are in line with Cary and Raleigh, which are about 200. And lastly, the change reduces the burden on infill and redevelopment parcels. Right now, with the 400, if your proposed development would generate over 300 average daily trips, there's a, there's a really, there could be a potential chance that you'll have to have 400, and you may not have actually 400 foot of frontage on your property, or the adjacent driveway is literally two, like, five or 10 feet off of your property line. So then you have to shift further around, and that can cause some, that puts as a burden on your good development. By reducing, by removing the IT standard, we'll just keep, it's on a major, excuse me, it's on a major and minor thoroughfare, you'd be with the 250 feet. And, yeah, there are two action items today. I think I attached those for motions. But yeah, any questions, feel free to send them away.
Thank you, Dylan. I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
Can you give us an example of a major and a minor thoroughfare?
Sure. So, minor, we have Slater, Carrington, Watkins, Perimeter Park Drive, Town Hall Drive, Morseville Parkway. Major roads are NC 54, Davis Drive, McCrimmon Parkway, Morseville Carpenter Road, Northwest Cary Parkway, and Aviation Parkway.
And your proposal is the 250 feet for either major or minor?
Correct. Collector roads or local roads where there's no change in, there's no proposed change. And actually, with the ITE Trip Generation Manual, you're reducing the burden on those roads as well, because there are some instances on a private road up kind of north, there was a proposed development that, I said, like, the ninth and 10th generation came in, that was a local road. So you're, so you're really just setting the standards, access standards, for major and minor thoroughfares.
And what would we typically see on a collector's street, or something less than a minor?
Well, based on the collectors we have now, which is Kid Creek Road and Mason Farm, and then Parkside, a lot of those function as, there's no frontage, there are a lot of residential that adjusts, the HOA spaces along it. So there's really no major frontage. I would say, based on the three, there are three roads, Paramount, International, and Church Street, that have lots that are developable or developed that have major frontage. The rest, like Jeremiah and Downing Glen again, are the residential, residential collectors, which are mainly HOA properties.
And just so I fully get my head around this, so this is for commercial, not, obviously not residential?
No, this would be, this is, language is not, is for all develops. It's not currently written for specifically land use. So we're looking at potentially multifamily with 250, retail with 250. We do have this standard, just to make sure. Intersections for major and neighborhood shopping centers will still be 400 feet, 400 feet apart. That is not being removed at this time.
So, Church Street, was that a minor thoroughfare?
That's a collector.
So the folks who live on Church Street won't be impacted by this?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I mean, I guess, was there any, I mean, you just realized this was going to be an issue, I guess, in the future. I mean, that's, I guess, what's the impetus of the change?
I will say, this was something, I know when Courtney brought the, Courtney started the amendment process in October and Michelle finished, this was something that I had noticed to be problematic since my arrival here, and it just didn't get in. So that's, it was just something, and I know it's been a, it's problematic with our redevelopment parcels.
Tim, any questions? Josh? Looks like an easy one, then. You just need to have the right wording. Would you like to bring up on the screen the sort of wording that you recommend?
I think I have the pronouns.
We have, Marty did that.
It's a really long consistency statement, so whoever wants to go for that one, you get to read a lot.
We need to make this life simpler.
Josh? I don't mind doing them, but I mean, I've done the last few.
Josh is the voting member tonight, so...
He already did the last one.
Oh, well, in that case.
As required by General Statute 168-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2020-57-0 of the Morseville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to driveway spacing standards, CPA 000097-2020, based on the following. The proposed text amendments amend the regulations in various sections of the Unified Development Ordinance. These revisions support the following goal in the Town Comprehensive Transportation Plan. A, culture and environment, promote consistency between transportation improvements, land use decisions, and economic development patterns, as well as the following goal in the Town's Land Use Plan. Policy 3C, encourage infill and redevelopment of existing areas as a way to promote compact, efficient development and support transportation options. And the following goal and objective in the Town Strategic Plan. Objective 2.4, establish a planned approach for redevelopment revitalization. Objective 6.2, economic prosperity, support new and existing businesses by streamlining processes and minimizing complexities.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you.
And I hereby move to recommend approval of Ordinance 2020-57-0 of the Morseville Town Council approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to driveway spacing standards, CPA 000097-2020.
Do I have a second for that motion?
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Thanks, Lee.
Give me a load, give me a load something, Marty? Newsletter? Okay.
Time to Michelle.
So things that, you know, we had a kind of quiet couple months, but things have started to pick back up. We had one new hotel development come in, and another hotel development approved. So, a plan submitted for a new hotel at 610 Airport Boulevard, and then there was an affordable suite that a plan was approved out at the Shiloh Crossing Shopping Center. In terms of Town Council activity over the past month, Town Council did adopt the Wake County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan that you previously reviewed and made a recommendation on, and also approved the last round of text amendments that came through. That happened at their January 28 meeting. There was also a workshop on January 14th on the Land Use Plan, and also highlighted under other news is a new citizen rezoning brochure. The planner to Elliot Ward finished up. Just provide some general information to residents about the rezoning process, the different types of rezonings, and what to expect at a Planning and Zoning Board or Town Council meeting if they do have questions or concerns or want to comment. So that is in the process of being put up on our website and is being sent out with all of our state statute required mailings. So it was included in all the notices for the rezoning that you heard tonight. Just to provide some, a little bit of information to residents. That is all I have.
Thanks, Michelle. So...
No comments.
Chris? Any comments?
No comments, but I think it's really helpful, though, to have the put together describing what the board does and the rezoning process. I think that'll be really helpful for people. I thought that was great.
No comments.
I mean, this previous application was really something that I was kind of torn apart. Since we have got two Town Council members in here, I would like to reiterate that we really ought to start looking at things strategically about big parcels, and rather than do them piece by piece. We don't have that many opportunities, let's capitalize on these opportunities upfront, as opposed to reactionary later on. So if that's something you can, I encourage us to do more often. The only other one is wish you all a very happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. That's the only other one.
Thanks.
The meeting isn't Valentine's Day, I think, like last year?
I think we did, yeah.
No comments, though?
No comments.
Well, my only comment is to thank Lee for standing in as chairperson. And I didn't make it clear, the reason I recuse myself was because I do live on Holly Creek Road, so, although that was appropriate. I think there's one item left on the agenda, if anybody would like to make a motion. I think there's one item left on the agenda, if anybody would like to make a motion. It's to adjourn.
I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
What kind of seconds? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.